Okay, we've got three cases to hear under the abatement of nuisance. Now, before we start, I want to read to you what the abatement of nuisance means and its responsibility now of this board based on the master plan that was adopted in 2010. And the fact that the city has revised the revised the property municipal code. The board may require the conduct that he use conforming or non-conforming which results in unreasonable noise, smoke, vibration, fumes, dust, tire, radio interference, or hazard explosion cancer. Or nuisance to the surrounding property may be modified or changed to abate such hazard to help comfort inconvenience. The board may direct the building official to issue an abatement order, but such order may be directed only after a public hearing by the said board, notice of which shall be sent a registered mail to the owner and/or operators of the property on which the use is conducted, in addition to due notice of advertisement in the newspaper of general circulation. A hearing to consider the issue of an abatement order shall be held by the board either upon petition signed by any person affected by the hazard of nuisance, or upon initiative of the board, an abatement order shall be directed by the board after only upon reasonable evidence of a hazard of nuisance, and such order shall be specified date by which the hazard of nuisance shall be abated. Now, this board operates under the common vow of honor. It is not responsible to the city council. If you disagree with the actions of this board, you have the right to appeal to circuit court. If you do not, if you're a fine, or if this board finds that you have any nuisance and recommends that you abate, if you do not abate it within the specified time, the board has asked you to do it, the city has the power to come in and abate the nuisance. If they do, they have the power to do it for that for their services. If you refuse to pay for those services, the city has the power to leave you on the property. I want everyone to understand that because the process board is now in the process of looking at abatement issues very seriously. And we do have three cases tonight. Case number 1279, abatement of nuisance on a property located at 205 401, 415 Maple Avenue, property is on the M1 light, and you got your distance Paige Earhart, property owner is, they are hearts here, Paige Earhart here. I wanted had an opportunity to look at that today. I do have pictures on my cell phone. If any other board members would like to see those pictures clearly.
I wouldn't look at it. I wouldn't look at it.
You wouldn't look at it?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Anyway, if any rest of board members would like to look at photographs, or anybody else here would like to look at photographs, just certainly can. Certainly, the property is in condition where it needs to be something done. The only problem that I had was a location at 205 Maple Avenue. My Google map said that it was right next to Michael's residence on the east side. Is that correct? I don't believe that.
I think the properties they're talking about are the burnt house. It's actually 205 Tupelo Pike, I believe.
Oh, okay. Yeah, well, I got to the burnt house and I got to the other lot.
Then there's the granary.
Okay.
And then at the next intersection down with Alabama Avenue or street, I can't remember, there's the old chicken hatchery in the last storm we had six weeks or so ago rolled about a quarter of that roof off. I don't know if you looked at the roof.
Is there anybody else in this audience who wants to speak to this issue?
My name's Michelle Sanders, and I'm a resident of Jackson House, thoughtful for the majority of my life, 48, anybody wants to know. And my grand here is guilty house I lived in on Quincy Street in 1960. So I'm from this area. I'm proud to be from this area. And I'm proud that I live on Tupelo Pike on Quincy Street. But I'm not proud of what people see when they come to visit me. It's an embarrassment to me. I would be embarrassed to have this quarter put to my house, drive over there to see what they're going to encounter before they get to my house. I got yard of the month last year, so proud, so proud that my husband and I work so hard in our yard and make it so pretty. Several of my neighbors on Quincy Street, we ban together and we work really hard to make it look nice. But it is a total embarrassment, humiliation, and I don't understand why it hasn't been brought to this board to teach an argument that something needs to be done, and we'd be quite willing to issue a grievance.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak to the issue? Question, was the registered letter sent?
That's Josh's responsibility. I don't know what he has or hasn't.
Yes.
The registered letter was sent?
Yes.
Okay. So, the property owner has received notice. I'll entertain whatever action the board wants to take. I don't, I don't think. Have you heard, have you heard anything back?
No, she's not responded to phone calls more or less in the last few months.
Is something that we've talked to them before, ma'am?
Oh, yes.
Both of you. I think the last correspondence was when the house partially burned and the fire department got involved and we had an issue there and she did give them authorization. I think they ended up parking the hogwood and finished burning it for training exercises, and that's been the last one.
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct. That was our last communication with her. I couldn't take the date on that because I didn't look. When we completed that burn, we notified her again that we were done. She was aware going into that as any time we do this, returning purposes, property owners aware, clearly aware that they're responsible for the property cleaning up, the property after, anything that remains. This was focused solely on the residential structure on Tupelo. So we notified her and then as you could tell, there's been no action. We tried to, you know, tape it off as best we could, but we don't have a resource squad there to keep people away. From a safety standpoint, for me, that property causes a concern. Aesthetics aren't really my thing right now in this sense, and I understand their point, but that property does cause a safety concern. And at the same time, the other two locations also, I, seven or eight years ago, we actually had to close part of that road for some time because part of the old granary was impending on the road and passersby, so vagrants and other things. All of that causes a public safety concern for me personally at this point.
I think it's also, just my personal opinion, I think it's also an attractive nuisance for kids.
It's an actual.
And from your standpoint, that would prove it a safety concern.
I personally would like to say a harsh, just a new fire station built up there.
Lots of times, we can't, you have to, you know.
You got the right, you got the right person.
Let the trines block our tracks.
You got the right person, you just made some wrong remarks.
But I make sure that the trines block the tracks and we're out alone.
There need to be a fire station built there. I own the property. It would be a great place to build a fire station.
Let me ask some next question, please. It is, it looks like the city have to clean that up. Is that going to be too big a project?
It would be a pretty extensive project. We've had some discussions about it. If the city ended up getting involved and had to clean it up, then we obviously would bill her or put a lien against them.
What are we talking about doing when y'all was talking about cleaning it up? Are you talking about cleaning everything down?
Yes, we're talking about cleaning it up.
Those little brick structures, like, would they go?
Everything.
Everything, that house, that burned house there, I mean, there's debris, there's debris.
It's dead, I guess got killed by the fire, but it's technically on her property. We discussed cutting it, but she knowing it was on her property, we cut it, then we'd end up other issues, but that's not on there.
Now, if, let's say that the city cleaned, takes care of, that's going to be a big spot there that's going to have to be maintained?
Yes, sir.
The property owner still has to maintain it?
Yes, sir, it's up to her.
It's up to her.
Well, she, you know, if they don't do anything with this, they won't cut the grates. So that means you'd be billing her constantly.
Repeatedly.
It's been several months, but we've had lots of discussions about the property.
Our responsibility is just issue the board.
Mayor, when was the notice sent or do you recall?
I don't have a date. It's been after time heard of it.
Okay. We have our responsibility to issue them if we find that there's grounds for an abatement of nuisance in this issue. First order of business, does the board find that there is any nuisance in this issue?
I say yes.
Everybody's opinion goes. What timeline do we want to give the property owner to abate the issue?
I would send another letter, and if you don't hear anything in 30 days.
I'd say give her, the minimum requires 30 days, so I'd say give her the minimum.
Well, 30, 30 days would mean that the city would act on the matter after 30 days. So is the board in agreement with the 30 day notice?
Yes. August the first. And August the first, and the city goes. We got sort of four, five days.
We'll just count the days on the calendar and give her 30 days.
She's aware of the situation. So if you notice what they did, then no, we paid the ordeal.
We just have to agree on something.
That's why I didn't, I just want to make sure.
The minimum, the amount how you're thirty.
The minimum is thirty, I think that's all we're going to do.
I hear motion to abate the nuisance on case number 1279, 30, 30 days. So exactly. All papers say, huh? 1280, abatement of nuisance on a property located at 629, 631, 633, Russell Street, property is on R3 single and two family residential, Mr. Wallinger. I went down and looked at the day. 631 is the one that's really in bad shape. What are you finding?
Don't clean it up, it's just damaged. We've done some, but I know it's not what needs to be done.
Yeah, the house on the corner doesn't look too bad.
I would, as of when I got the letter, cannot look real good at eight.
Are they all occupied?
No.
Are any of them occupied now?
629.
Yeah, so I'm right here, 629.
Do they keep the yard open or are you?
That's their responsibility.
Okay, so are they keeping it open?
My knowledge, they, they have never, I've never had an issue with them not looking at the ground.
Yeah, they had to, they had to, they had to move it, they, that's 631.
And the lady that lives there, I don't know how long has lived there. The, I acquired the property, it's partially from my brother and partially from my grandfather, and she was there long before then. I'm not sure she hadn't lived there longer than I've been alive.
Okay. Are the two houses that's not occupied, are they livable?
Uh, one is not, it needs some extensive.
629, 631.
631 needs some extensive remodeling. 633, to my knowledge, needs some minor carpentry work, but I had been told it's going to have some electrical work that I have not been able to find out exactly.
Are they worth fixing?
Yes. I actually had somebody a few months ago that was willing to do carpentry work in exchange for deposit and first month's rent. And when we contacted the power board about getting power turned on, they said we would have to have it inspected. And building code had changed, most likely I would be required to do some upgrades. I left five messages at City Hall trying to find out what was, would be required and never got a return call.
Well, I think your responsibility would be to kind of direct, contact the license electrician. I don't know, city inspectors are looking at you on that.
That's why we would be advised to, you got any electrician to kind of look at it. I worked in an apartment for she, you know, to my knowledge, we hadn't got any calls from technical management. This has been several months ago. I left two, and my wife said she left two or three. But I left, she left one today about this meeting. Because conflict came up and I needed to be somewhere else and.
Okay, well, let's go back to beginning. Let's go back to the beginning since you just made that statement. Did you receive the registered letter?
I did.
Okay. Make sure that that's, that you did receive the registered letter.
Are your, are your plans to make those other two houses livable and get them occupied? And what kind of timeframe are you thinking about?
Depends on what I'm going to have to do, electrical and whatever. I'm not an electrician.
How long can they be in this chip?
Well, like I said, I tried reading the one on the end and I didn't, couldn't find out what to do. Then my intentions were to take the income from that house and use it to remodel 631.
But my question was, how long have they been like this?
631's been that way for a significant period of time. Years, uh, year and a half maybe.
When's the last time power was connected to 631? That would be the, to interject, that would be how I'd decide how long.
I'm curious, just to know.
I'm thinking you're looking more at six or eight years since somebody's lived in there, five or six anyway.
I used to live on Marist Street, so I'm not.
But I found out like the last time 633 was rented, I found out the power was never cut on, they only stayed there a few months. But come to find out after they've left, the power was never turned on, that I did not know about.
Did they actually rent?
Well, they paid two months. And then it took me two months to get them out. And I found out during that time that not only did they not have power, they never had it connected.
You're going to follow? And basically, I think you need to tell us what you're going to do when. That's just what we do.
Well, one of y'all made the statement that you didn't have an issue with 633.
Oh, I didn't make that statement.
Well, I said it looked a lot better. I think, I think you're right, I think that.
I think you said your work would look okay.
Well, appearance wise, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to step foot into electrical issues and all the rest of the issues that might be connected with that. I think that's, you know, you have to look at that. Okay. From a parent's standpoint, I think 633 looks best.
That question, what is, what are we here for? Are we here for appearance or what?
All of that.
I mean, the letter I received did not stay.
It. The house has to look like a residence, like someone's living there, it is well maintained, well taken care of, and, you know, that's, that's the standard. And 631 does not meet that standard.
Good, have you been contacted about this property before?
Not anyone in previous years.
Okay.
Mr. Wallinger.
Because we've got a note here that says they, it goes once a year they contacted you and that conflicts about the next four years. It's the people that live on the street that have to deal with it, you know. Detracts from their house and devalues their house.
I wouldn't be concerned particularly with 631. Her home's healthy, she's particularly attracting snakes, rodents, whatever else, it's just grown up so bad.
Well, that will be addressed within 30 days.
Okay. And if you plan to rent them, you probably need to have electric come and look and see if it's electric or it's not. You would want to run it down on the family.
Yeah, if you're a landlord, you have the responsibility to do that.
Did I understand you right to say, even the last thing was granted, or 633, the last thing was granted was, it was checked by an electrician and it was inspected by Mr. Wallace. Did I understand you to say that you need 30 days?
Oh, within 30 days, you said.
Did you say it all be corrected within 30 days?
I said that he asked when I would have it cleaned up to where it does not look like mine does. I said I would have it done within 30 days.
Yeah, I, when I took pictures today, so if anybody wants to take a look at it, this is the house on the corner. It definitely not too bad. But this is.
It needs to be.
This, uh, this is 631.
The bushes need to be cut and trimmed.
Well, the last resident planted keeps picking, I don't know what it is.
No, you need to cut them off down.
Probably, well, last year we cut it back to basically nothing. I think it's going to need, like I said, I don't know what it is, I don't know if they're rounding up to kill it or. What, no, it's vines of some sort. It's a log up chains. But it's got something that was planted there that I don't, it's not a vine I'm familiar with, and this is one that's probably got. And if, the vines were worse than they were, they went from the porch all the way to the road. And like I said, they, it's done that dispriving in early summer. I said I'm probably going to have to get something to kill that. Because it's evidently something that will continue to spread.
Well, is there any handicap on your part that you can get 631 addressed in the next 30 days?
The property cleaned up, the cleaned up part that.
You can, you can't get it now.
I can't. There's no handicap to get the property cleaned up.
When you clean it up, when, if you drive down that street, you, you wouldn't know, you might think somebody's living in those houses. It's empty when you get to clean it up?
I mean, if you look in the windows, it's going to be obvious.
No, I don't know if I drive down the street, will they look like the other houses?
No, I'm not going to plant flowers or anything, and you know, there's some in that area that don't. But you know, some of them do, and I'm not going to go to that extent.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to abate the nuisance particularly on 631 in the next 30 days.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I need to ask a question before, but you clean it up. Then, are you going to keep it cleaned up, or will we have another meeting about nuisance?
I will try to keep it cleaned up.
Well, you're objecting.
Over a longer period of time, I'm going to try to remodel and get them rented.
Your objection should be to remodel.
It is, but there's financial things you have to look at getting them rented. Like I said, carpentry work, I probably do, you know, like, I'm not an electrician. I do not do electrical work. You know, I have to see what, you know, that's going to cost and what will be done is financially paid.
I moved it, we give them 30 days to clean it up.
Does that mean the 30 days will have to come back, right?
Well.
If you clean it up, he's going to come back.
She, she made the motion.
You know, I didn't give you.
I did.
Okay. Your motion.
Give him 30 days to clean it up.
I'll say.
All I can say, huh? All those. Okay, thank you, Mr. Wallinger. Case number 1281, abatement of nuisance on the property located at 120 Elm Street, property is on R3 single and two family residential, Sean Woods, property owner. I do not see an advocate here as you've been sent her issue of letter.
I know Mr. Woods by sight, he's not here, he's not present.
Have you got pictures of that there?
Yeah, I got pictures of that house.
I couldn't find the old street.
I got pictures. It's, uh, here we go. It's a. It's, uh, off North Houston, you get into the, it does look like the house is being used, but here, the backs of the back of the house is sort of a little shape.
Is that locked with it?
Sean Woods. Okay, here's the picture. It doesn't look, it looks like the house has been used for storage.
Nobody did it?
I, I couldn't, I couldn't see anybody live in it. It looks like I saw boxes piled up inside. I think it, it needs to be cleaned up. Does board have any recommendations? 30 days. Okay, I entertain a motion of abatement of nuisance, 30 days.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
All papers say aye. Ladies and gentlemen, the evening is adjourned.